It's too cold. It's a little cold today. A little cold.
Y'all saving these cookies? Y'all hanging them?
Alright, y'all ready? Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, I'll call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare that we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our eyes, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Ms. Thomas, roll call please.
Dr. Bellamy.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Galvin.
Here.
And first up, Dr. Richardson has an announcement. Okay, alright, so any announcements?
We have a few trickling around. I can go first. The Parks and Recreation Department is setting up two community meetings for Parks projects. The first is on Wednesday, November 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at Burley Middle School Auditorium regarding the Rugby Avenue Trail and Greenleaf Park Playground Public Discussions. The second is Wednesday, November 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Water Street Center at the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. That's on the Community Forest Plan Public Meeting for the 142-acre acquisition adjacent to Ragged Mountain. Contact Chris Genzik at Parks and Trails Planner, City of Charlottesville, at 970-3656 for additional information.
Ms. Walker, I have one. The Charlottesville City Council will meet in a special work session on Friday, November 15th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at Carver Recreation Center to discuss the disposition of the Sacagawea Lewis and Clark statue and to hear directly from the members of the Shoshone Tribe, descendants of Sacagawea. We will also be joined by members of the Monican Indian Nation and other Native representatives as well as city staff. A traditional Native American smudging ceremony will take place before the meeting at 8:30 a.m. at the patio near the entrance of Carver Recreation.
Any other announcements?
I have a few. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Alright, man, alright.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Foley, for singing "Happy Birthday." It is my birthday. Do the right thing. I appreciate it. I appreciate the song, Mr. Foley. I was pleasantly surprised. In all seriousness, I have a few announcements. The first is from the DMV. So, can't get to DMV? The DMV is coming to you. The City of Charlottesville at City Space on Monday, November 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can come down here to City Hall, get all of your DMV needs met. They offer a wide variety of services, including the Real ID, the driver's license, identification cards, adult and child, disabled parking place cards, or excuse me, placards, vehicle titles, address changes, vehicle registrations, EZ Pass, transponders, compliance summaries, transcripts, as well as hunting and fishing licenses. So, you can view mobile operations, view the mobile operations calendar at www.dmvnow.com. And again, they will be at City Space from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Monday, November 25th. I have a couple more announcements. Mayor Walker, if you don't mind. Above and beyond the call of duty, the commemoration of the African-American military experience will take place on November 8th and 9th at the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center. So, on Friday, November 8th, there will be a large exhibit, and this will be from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and there'll be guest speakers throughout the day. On Saturday, November 9th, they'll have exhibits from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then the Jefferson School, or excuse me, and again, this is all taking place at the Jefferson School. For more information, you can contact Ms. Maxine Holland for, to go and partake in the commemoration of the African-American military experience for Veterans Day. Couple more. On Saturday, November 16th, at 9:00 a.m., starting at the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center, there's going to be a 5K run, a turkey trot. Vice Mayor Hill and I were just talking about, we're going to be trotting for turkeys, right? Kind of? Alright, maybe. So, all proceeds will go towards the annual turkey giveaway, which will take place on Sunday, November 24th. And last year, many of you participated, and I know a lot of y'all donated turkeys, you guys donated shoes, so we're going to do that again, but this year, we're going to have a turkey trot 5K first. So, I don't want to hear any complaining. A lot of y'all came out to the last run this summer. This time, it's a little bit shorter. It's not four miles, it's only 5K. Dr. Richardson, you down?
Yeah, I can do about half.
You do about half? That ain't going to cut it. Mayor Walker, where you at? You with it? Mike, don't leave me hanging. Mike, where we at? Where we at?
We'll talk.
Ms. Galvin?
Maybe. I supported you last time. I was the cheerleader.
The cheerleader? I know, you need to run. Mr. Blair, Ms. Thomas?
Gobbling it up.
Gobbling it up, alright. In any event, so we have, hope we have some more support from y'all than my colleagues leave me hanging. Saturday, November 16th, again, at 9:00 a.m., you all can go online and sign up, wecode2cville.com. Again, 100% of the proceeds are going to the annual turkey giveaway. Let's make sure that we do all that we can to provide some turkeys for the families in need. As you all know, the line is normally wrapped around the building, and the turkey giveaway is on Sunday, November 24th, at the Jefferson School at 2:00 p.m. Gobble, gobble, turkey, turkey, let's run, let's eat, let's have a good time. That's all I have, Mayor Walker.
Thank you. Alright. Ms. Thomas, roll call please. Oh, we did that, sorry. Any proclamations? And consent agenda? That's where I was. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
Jeffrey Fogel, I live in Belmont here in the city. I've raised this issue before. As you know, one of the problems, well, look, the main thing that we could do in our society is to take the issue of drugs and mental health out of the criminal justice system and public, put it in a public health system. But unfortunately, that doesn't appear to be happening anytime in the near future. So, we have a mental health court for which you are tonight, I think, only authorizing 45,000. But the point here is that, as you should know, in order to avail yourself of the help that's being offered by this court, you must plead guilty first. If you do not plead guilty, you cannot get help, no matter how much you want it. And so, you're being coerced into pleading guilty in order to get help. As I understand it, by the way, in this behavioral treatment court, four people have passed through this year so far. So, you may want to think about whether your expenditures and your authorizations are producing a worthwhile result, or whether there's something getting in the way. But the notion that people have to plead guilty is something that came up, for example, in the death penalty cases, when states were requiring people, if they pled not guilty, they could get the death penalty, but if they pled guilty, they would get life in prison. And that was deemed to be a coercion on the defendant's right to plead not guilty and have a trial. That's exactly what's going on here. And it happens in the drug court as well. And there's no reason for it, unless you believe, and maybe you do, and maybe the people who run it do as well, that punishment is the goal of these rehabilitation efforts. Because that's what's happening. They punish people in order to get them to comply, and then claim they have a wonderful record. But nobody's looking at that record as it goes out the number of years. Wonderful record in year one, not such a wonderful record in year two or in year three, because these cases require follow-up and not simply a short-term intervention with the stick of the court in people's eyes about getting help in that court system. Last time we were here, I think there were people from OAR, and I do recall Neil Goodlow, I think it was Counsel Galvin who asked him, is that a requirement in order to have a behavioral treatment court? And he said he didn't know, and he would get back to you. Now, I haven't heard anything, and I wonder whether you have. I suspect not, or something might have been said. Well, if you haven't heard anything, that means either he can't find the answer, he doesn't know about the answer, he doesn't care about the answer, or he knows that it's wrong. He knows that it's not required by the Supreme Court and that we could be treating it in a very different way. Thank you.
That counsel, that 45,000, as he would just mention, was a grant that's coming from our, which we receive from the Supreme Court of Behavioral Health, Docket Grant. We've contributed 55,000, as well as Aunt Maureen Carroll contributed 55,000. And what that is, basically, just a six-to-12-month program, whereas if the folks that are allowed to be in that program, they complete it, they'll, their records can be expunged. So, it's a total of 155,000, and we do have those funds, which, you know, basically was part of the Fender Aid and Restoration Budget Line.
And I agree with the points that just, that were just made, and especially when we are assessing the diversionary programs, we need to look at, you know, if they're punitive and how can we make them not so. There's also a requirement for this, and I know we're not evaluating this program, but it's just good to have it on record, that the participants are required to take medication in turn, as, you know, to be in the program, and that's just something else that I think should be looked at when this program is being evaluated. So, just making sure if we have, like, these diversionary-type, you know, measures in place, that they are, you know, more helpful than, you know, some of them. So, that's just something when we are assessing that, and for individuals out there who are running the program, that, you know, that we hope that they start thinking about early on.
Any, anyone else who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
We will soon be discussing the Police Civilian Review Board.
Okay, so that's later. That's not on the consent agenda?
True.
Anyone else who would like to speak on a matter on the consent agenda? And, okay, so Ms. Thomas.
A, minutes, September 16th, 2019, special and regular meetings. B, appropriation, Virginia Behavioral Health Docket Grant, $45,000, first of two readings. C, appropriation, Parks and Recreation Gift Guide Memorials Account, $3,260, second reading. D, appropriation, State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, $14,230, second reading. E, resolution, waiver of Charlottesville area transit fees for Election Day, one reading. F, ordinance, releasing a gas line easement, Oakley Development on Rio Road, second reading. G, ordinance, vacating a public utility easement on a property at Emmett Street and Barracks Road, second reading. H, ordinance, repealing Chapter 31, Section 31-103, Buck Mountain, surcharge for water connections, second reading.
And the only other, I don't want to pull anything, so, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Second.
Okay. And the only other comment is the same comment I made last year about appropriation D, just making sure that there isn't a requirement to report for the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program for individuals at the jail, that that mechanism for receiving those funds isn't turned into, like, ICE notifications or anything like that.
Yeah, I can confirm that, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, they said no last year, but I just want to, you know, still point that out, that the fact that this information is being collected, just that we know what is being utilized. Alright, any other comments or questions? Alright, please vote. Alright, that carries five to zero. Next up, we have Dr. Richardson's response to community matters from the October 21st meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. I just wanted to confirm that the date was correct for November 18th for the Department of Social Services Advisory Board. They will be presenting their annual report to the council. The second item is, I know there's a question pertaining to the audible signals being placed at Preston and Rose Hill. This will be completed in late 2019. This is primarily due to condo work as well as scheduling, so that's why it's going to take a while to be able to get that done, but there will be audible signals at Preston and Rose Hill. One other item that I wanted to bring to your attention was that the CAT, they will be waiving the fees, as was mentioned in the consent agenda, for riders on Election Day. What I wanted to do this year is to put on agenda for the first time to have it as a resolution. This was primarily to create a record for future councils as a reference or anyone else who sits in my position, I worked in the city, to have a record of it rather than just a, you know, a formal announcement that we will be waiving the fees for tomorrow for those who use CAT transportation in hopes of, for a good cause, to be able to get to the polls throughout the city. And the last thing I wanted to mention today was the introduction of our new HR Director, Ms. Michelle Vineyard.
Would you like to just say a few? Put you on the spot. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Walker and members of council. It certainly is a privilege to have been selected for this position, and I'm really looking forward to the exciting things we're going to accomplish ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so next we have Community Matters. And first up, we have Robert Myers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Myers, a lifelong Charlottesville and Albemarle resident. This is a different subject, but in light of the recent renewed attacks on the monuments, I would like to offer a pre-21st century view of generals Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson. And this is from an op-ed 20 years ago in the Washington Post titled "In Defense of General Lee," by Dr. Edward C. Smith, an African-American, professor of history at American University in Washington and co-director of its Civil War Institute. He says, "Let me begin on a personal note. I am a 56-year-old, third-generation African-American Washingtonian who happens to be a great admirer of Robert E. Lee." He notes, "Lee was top of his class at West Point, a Mexican war hero, a Mexican-American war hero, and President Superintendent of West Point. General Jackson was not U.S. military, but taught at VMI, a Virginia state institution. His statue here is one of the finest equestrian statues in America." Dr. Smith also notes, "It is important to remember that the 13 colonies that became the 13 states reserved for themselves a tremendous amount of political autonomy. In pre-Civil War America, most citizens' first loyalty went to their state and region." Referring to the United States of America in the singular is a purely post-Civil War phenomenon. In other words, it was the United States are, not the current United States is. All this should help explain why Lee declined command of Union forces after Fort Sumter. After much agonizing, he resigned his commission in the Union Army and became a Confederate commander, fighting in defense of Virginia, which he was sure it would, as it was, soon attack. Lee never owned a single slave because he felt slavery was morally reprehensible."
Nancy?
I disagree, but I can clarify that later if I'm given time, but anyway. He even opposed secession. Martin Luther King was one of the few civil rights leaders who clearly understood that the era of the 1960s was a distant echo of the 1860s, and thus, he read deeply into Civil War literature. He came to admire and respect Lee, and Lee, Lee was, after the war, Lee was so respected, even in Washington, that he is memorialized with a statue in the U.S. Capitol and in stained glass in the Washington National Cathedral. He then devoted the rest of his life to educating young people, becoming president of Washington College, which became Washington Lee, and working for post-war reconciliation. It was there that he made the poignant remark a few months before his death, "Before and during the war, I was a Virginian. After the war, I became an American." Dr. Smith finishes by saying, "I have been teaching college students for 30 years and learned early in my career that the twin maladies of ignorance and misinformation are not incurable diseases." The antidote for them is simply to make a lifelong commitment to reading widely and understanding people in the time in which they lived.
Thank you.
And, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm George Worthington.
Hello. My name is George Worthington, and I'm a resident of Albemarle County. I'm here tonight as the convener for Dementia Friendly Central Virginia, an organization of volunteers helping make our communities more accessible and welcoming of people living with dementia and their caregivers. In Charlottesville, more than 1 in 10 residents over the age of 65 is living with some form of dementia, often undiagnosed. Another group of people under 65 and as young as 30 is living with younger onset Alzheimer's disease or another form of dementia. And African-Americans are twice as likely as white Americans to develop dementia. But dementia does not just affect the person with the condition. Hundreds more family members and friends provide care to the 80% of residents with dementia who live at home. Almost every family in Charlottesville and will have been touched in some way by dementia. We are fortunate in our area to have many supports and services for these folks, such as the Alzheimer's Association, JABA, and the Memory and Aging Care Clinic at UVA, one of the only clinics in the state dedicated to the diagnosis and treatment of dementia. These organizations and many more help make our area relatively dementia-capable, meaning that systems to support people living with dementia are in place. But due to a lack of awareness about dementia and a resulting stigma, many of these folks still find it difficult to engage with their community. Many people living with dementia and their families will withdraw from social engagement due to embarrassment, fear of being judged, and other forms of stigma. Research shows that maintaining social engagement can help slow the progress of the disease and improves the quality of life for people living with dementia. This is where Dementia Friendly Central Virginia comes in. This initiative is part of a national and international movement to help ensure that people living with dementia and their caregivers are fully able to engage with their community and to continue to thrive in their day-to-day lives. We want to help people maintain their links with this vibrant community by providing free training and dementia awareness to businesses, organizations, and groups of individuals. These sessions, led by volunteers, offer important information about dementia and encourage people to think what they themselves can do to be more dementia-friendly at work or in their community. Over the past year, our action team has laid the groundwork for this effort, and in September, we were thrilled to join Dementia Friendly Americas, National Network of Dementia Friendly Communities. This does not mean that Charlottesville is now dementia-friendly, but it does give us the opportunity to learn from initiatives in other communities around the country as we work towards that goal. as we work towards that goal. We are now at the point of rolling out our training and partnering with businesses and organizations to help them become dementia-friendly. As this initiative develops in the months and years ahead, we look forward to working with the City of Charlottesville to create a dementia-friendly Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tony Wash.
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to address the holiday tradition of our Christmas tree. The city has always displayed a beautiful Christmas tree, along with other decorations, on the light poles on the downtown mall. Last year, Dr. Bellamy was influential in making sure that was done. Thank you, Dr. Bellamy, on behalf of the citizens. The tree has always been the center of the mall holiday decorations. The tree has always been located in the center of the activities and pedestrian traffic on the mall, like shopping, dining, in our many restaurants that are located on our mall. The location has always been at the fountain, near the Paramount Theater, where people can see it and admire it. Everyone passes the fountain location when they are shopping, dining, going to the Paramount, or just walk in the mall to enjoy all the holiday decorations and to get into the holiday spirit. This year, it has been decided to install the tree at the far end of the mall, in front of City Hall and the pavilion, where no one ever goes. If you have ever walked our mall on a Friday or Saturday evening, or Saturday afternoon, you would have noticed that at the end where they want to plan to install the tree this year, the only people that you ever see are the ones that are going to the parking garage. I have conducted a non-scientific survey. I have spoken to shop owners, restaurant owners, and not one of them are in favor of putting the tree in the location where their patrons will not get a chance to see it and enjoy it. They all said that the location of the fountain helps to bring customers into their business, which generates taxes. It makes no sense to put the city tree where no one will see it. Instead of the location that is planned for the tree, it would be best just to leave the tree on the, and I'm going to screw this up, Bondorf property, and save the taxpayers money that the city was going to spend to move the tree and install it in the planned location. I plead with you not to move the location of our city Christmas tree where it wouldn't be enjoyed by anyone. Please, just put it where it has always been. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Vogel.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Vogel. I live in Belmont, and I want to cede my time to Kim Rowa.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Kim Rowa. I'm an attorney at Legal Aid Justice Center at 1,000 Preston Avenue, and I'm here to discuss a memo that was sent to you earlier today by community members, including representatives of the initial civilian review board and the People's Coalition regarding the civilian review board proposed bylaws and ordinances. My colleague has handed you a copy of that memo. It's two enclosures and detailed redlines to the proposed bylaws and ordinances. So we understand from your agenda and the materials that were released on October 30th that council plans to attempt to pass the CRB ordinance and bylaws this evening. We are proposing 10 amendments to those bylaws and ordinances that were released with your agenda materials on October 30th, and we believe those amendments will satisfy both council and the community's desire to establish a strong foundation for the civilian review board. We've organized those 10 amendments into four categories to help councilors hold all of those as you have your conversations this evening, because I know it's a lot. I'm going to go through those 10 amendments and the four categories as a broad framework, and then other community members will come up during public comment to describe in detail the motivation and intention behind some of those amendments in more detail. Category one, simplify access to the civilian review board complaint review process. First Amendment, allow the civilian review board to review all Charlottesville Police Department complaints as necessary, regardless of the Internal Affairs investigation finding, and without requiring written approval of the complainant. Second Amendment, require the Charlottesville Police Department to forward all complaints filed with CPD to the civilian review board's executive director. Category two, establish collaborative communications between the CRB and the city and the Charlottesville Police Department. Third Amendment, require written explanations from the city manager when the civilian review board recommendations regarding the hiring and following, hiring and termination of staff are not followed. Fourth Amendment, require a written response from CPD to the civilian review board when the CRB makes policy recommendations, comments on proposed policy amendments, and issues complaint review findings. Fifth Amendment, add the Charlottesville Police Department's biased-based policing, disciplinary procedures, constitutional procedures, and use-of-force policies, general orders, to the November 4th, 2019 Resolution Policy Review List. Sixth Amendment, institute a minimum one-year trial period for the auditor position. Category three, facilitate public access to the staff and civilian review board work product. Seventh Amendment, ensure the CRB's annual report is a public document and include minimum requirements for what must be included in the report. Eighth Amendment, mandate the executive director produce a special annual report on the auditor trial period and future auditing recommendations. And the final category, fourth category, transparent staffing and self-government. Ninth Amendment, mandate that the names and qualifications of all applicants and finalists for the executive director position be posted publicly. And the final, tenth amendment, sever the proposed ordinance and bylaws, so there are no duplicative provisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adiola Ogun Kade?
Adiola.
Am I close? No, I want to get it right.
Adiola Kade, Legal Aid Justice Center. I'm here to talk to you, following up on my colleague's comments, specifically about amendments number six and eight. They're the amendments that deal with the auditor position. Amendment six requests that city council institute the auditor position for a trial period, minimum one year. Amendment eight requests that city council require then the work of that auditor to be captured and communicated to the city and the community via a special first annual report from the executive director. We understand that council has some trepidation about funding a full-time auditor position, to the extent that that owes to council's unfamiliarity with what work product an auditor would produce and what data an auditor would review. We think that a minimum trial period of one year is a low-stakes way for council to show that, one, you do have a good faith in trying to move forward a CRB that will be proactive instead of reactive. And, two, it will give you the necessary clarity and insight into what an auditor does and how an auditor completes his or her functions, so you can make an informed determination as to whether an auditor should be instituted permanently. At present, the city's proposal has the executive director making a decision in a really compressed timeframe, something that could be less than 60 days, to report to you all whether or not an auditor should be hired permanently. That's an unrealistic and unreasonable timeframe for you all to make a decision of such importance. Instead, if you institute the auditor for a minimum one-year trial period, what you will have is an auditor who can review policies and data in a limited category of areas. And if you look at memo enclosure two, you see that there are five suggested areas where the auditor, on a trial basis, can begin his or her work as a consultant to the executive director and the board, and then produce with the executive director a special report showing you the work that an auditor does. And that can inform and should inform your decision-making. That gives both the city and the executive director, who will be newly hired, time to settle into the role and to get a deeper understanding. And we think that represents a very reasonable compromise on trying to move forward a community demand that asks for an auditor now and not later.
And so I wasn't, when I was talking about the ability to hire a consultant, was to kind of help the ED start this work and give us that information. We didn't have to have a report within the 60 days, but I thought we were saying that if that report came in more quickly than not, that would give us the information, the beginning of the information to move forward. And that was instead of not having anything related to the auditor position.
Right. On the resolution that was discussed at the last council meeting, I do know that this is a different proposal than that.
Yeah.
And this is about hiring somebody immediately for one year as a trial period.
But that proposal was to get someone with the expertise to be able to assist.
To assist the ED to determine about the audit position.
All right. Mary Currie?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. You always speak. Mary Currie, city resident. What the people just said about the PCRB, I agree with you. And on top of that, I was going to talk some about it, but it makes me angry. So I better leave it alone. And then the other second part was transit. A lot of candidates are saying that they've been, this run of the city council, are saying that they've been pushing for transit for years, but the transit is not making the money that they should be making because the transit was taking out of the black communities. And now you're building up there on Preston Avenue, so you want to bring it back. And why? Give me an answer. Tell me, why is it coming back? When, for years and years, Ms. Adal Lewis and Ms. Josephine Morrison, Mr. Paul Long, Michael Payne, myself, hundreds of other people, been trying to get that transit back up there on Grady Avenue, 10th and Page, 8th Street, Preston Avenue, all up in there, just a black neighborhood. Now, you're building up up there again for what you always call in Charlottesville, affordable housing for rich people. And, because they're the only one that can afford it, and they can't halfway afford it because they probably cheat on their taxes. But anyway, now you want the transit back up there in the black neighborhood. Wonder how you're going to arrange that? I don't know. But anyway, every time you want to make some money, you look at the black community. That got to stop. This 20, what, what is this, 2019 or 1860? Dad, I don't know, from what that young man said up here about Lee not having no slaves. He had to sell his slaves because he was a drunk and he was losing his property. That's real, that's real history. They don't tell you that. But anyway, I'm like this, if Charlottesville transit is going to run and make any money, you're going to have to run it through the black community. And we've been sitting around letting y'all do what y'all want to do to us ever since we set foot on this land, on this continent. Times is changing. Just because more things stay the same, they don't have to be the same. Thank you very much, and have a good night. And don't forget to vote tomorrow, because that's very important.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Currie?
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, we've been having communication with Mr. Garland Williams.
Yes.
That's one of the key areas that we're looking at, is getting it into various areas throughout the community that transportation was removed from.
Right.
Throughout the city of Charlottesville, so we are working on that, and he's working with due diligence to try to get that done, too.
I hope so, because I talked to him, and he asked me, I gave him a direction to go in, because Ms. Adal Lewis, she used to be a sheriff in town, and Ms. Josephine Morrison, she was living down on 8th and Page, which Mr. Bellamy promised those people that he was going to get that transit running back down there four years ago. But anyway, Ms. Morrison, she had to go through the hell of having people in University of Virginia park in front of her house, because the people that just moved in there in the neighborhood were white people. They had put up some kind of parking pass. Then they cut the transit out, because the folks that moved in said the fumes was bothering them. They didn't have to move there.
Yeah, I understand. Ms. Currie.
Okay, but thank you anyway. I don't want to hold you up or nothing.
As you know, whatever you asked me to work on, we've been working on.
Thank you. Yeah, because I'm getting angry, Mr. Richardson.
I don't want you to get too angry.
And I think about the route changes. Councilor Galvin and I, we were on the RTP, and we were in a meeting with a consultant who had proposed route changes that we didn't recommend, you know, within the city, and they were all concentrated, well, four of them, in our, you know, black neighborhoods. And so we both talked about how that, you know, was not a route that we were going to take. And so in the past, even how that information was, you know, how we received that information, I'm sure was problematic, because we barely, you know, we didn't know about it until that report, and that just happened because of this committee, and that committee is a new committee.
Yeah, so I'm sure things happened in the past, just, you know, and until it was brought
to the attention, a lot of people didn't know.
And Mayor Walker, if I add, this report that Mayor Walker's referencing is a state-required report, and it was kind of an automatic thing that was just happening, and they were making recommendations, and the changes were happening, and they had not been coming to council. So there is more transparency now with the regional transit partnership meetings, and I think both Mayor and I agree that Mr. Williams is doing an excellent job, and he will be making the right kinds of changes and also informing us all on the way.
Walt Heinecke?
Hi, Walt Heinecke. I'm Hershey. I just wanted to first say that Stokely is in the house to say happy birthday to her father tonight.
She missed it. She missed it already.
I just wanted to, I wanted to drill down a little bit on the PCRB issue by going over a couple of the amendments that were raised before under the category of simplifying access to the CRB complaint review process. Amendment one calls for us to allow the CRB to review all CPD complaints as necessary, regardless of the Internal Affairs investigation finding, and without requiring written approval of the complainant. It should be simple and easy for community members to access the CRB complaint review process. The CRB should be able to review all complaints regardless of the Internal Affairs findings and without a community member necessary to have, having to file a written approval of needed oversight. If the CRB is tasked with overseeing the investigation of complaints to ensure the thoroughness, completeness, accuracy, objectivity, and impartiality of the Internal Affairs investigations, they should be able to review even those complaints that the IA determines are sustained or founded. A finding of sustained or founded does not make an IA investigation. are sustained or founded. A finding of sustained or founded does not make an IA investigation immune from the flaws that if spotted in the review could be easily corrected and thereby strengthening the IA process and community confidence in the process. Further, requiring a community member to provide a written approval before the CRB can review a complaint, even after a majority of the CRB members have determined to review is necessary, could frustrate oversight when it's needed the most because a community member is frightened of retaliation or otherwise unwilling or unable to participate publicly in the review process. The default should be ability to review when the CRB determines it is necessary with the option provided to community members to opt out if truly opposed. Amendment two is to require CPD to forward all complaints filed with CPD to the CRB's executive director. This will help ensure that all complainants are tracked, all complaints are tracked and reviewed at the end of the IA process, even if a formal review request and associated hearing are not initiated by either the community member or the CRB. If CPD shares all complaints that it receives with the CRB in a timely fashion, the community can be assured that the CRB will be aware of all complaints and the CRB can more effectively and efficiently exercise its review authority. Under the second category, establish collaborative communications between CRB and the city and CPD. Amendment three says, require a written explanation from the city manager when the CRB recommendations regarding the hiring and termination of staff are not followed. The executive director plays an outside role in CRB, um, operations and must work closely with the CRB members to accomplish board functions. As such, board members input recording the ED, regarding the ED's hiring or continued employment should be given considerable weight, even where the ultimate authority to hire or fire belongs to the city manager. The bylaws currently allow two CRB members to be on city manager's interview panel for hiring an executive director so they can provide advice and recommendations. Should the city manager reject a joint hiring recommendation from the two participating board members, she or he should provide the full board a written explanation after his, his or her reasoning. Similarly, where the city manager terminates the executive director of his or her own accord or fails to terminate the executive director at the request of the board, she or he should provide a written explanation to the full board. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Anderson?
She's here.
Huh?
She's here. She was here earlier. She left?
She left. Myra Anderson? No. All right. Um, Kate Fraley?
Mayor Walker, a quick question while, um, Kate is walking up. For you as well as, uh, Dr. Richardson, one of the items that Ms. Anderson brought up and we've discussed briefly before was in regards to the Sankofa Center, in regards to the specifically having African-American health professionals to address some of those issues. Is it possible for us to maybe review that again or get an update in that regards? I'm not sure if that's what she would be talking about tonight, but I do think it's something.
Is your group talking about that? The group that you convened? The nonprofit?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right.
But I still think, we're talking about it, but also.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering. Okay. Hi.
Hi, Kate Fraley, Charlottesville resident. Hello, everybody. I'm just gonna continue on with the amendment number four, and I wanna draw your attention to the fact that you have this, um, in the memorandum, if you wanna read along at the same time. Amendment four, require written responses from CPD to CRB after the CRB makes policy recommendations, comments on proposed policy amendments, and issues complaint review findings. The CRB recommendations and findings are not effective tools for change without a response from the CPD. Substantive public written responses from CPD to the CRB policy recommendations or review findings will foster collaborative communication between the CPD and the CRB, will allow the community to better understand the CPD's decision-making process, and will sharpen the CRB's understanding of how to improve future communications with the CPD. Amendment five, add CPD's biased base policing, disciplinary procedures, constitutional procedures, and the use of force policies to the November four, twenty nineteen resolution policy review list. We already know that the above named policies will have a direct impact on the CRB's complaint review functions as these policies are at the heart of most community interactions with officers that may result in complaints. Moreover, these policies were already turned over to the initial CRB during the formation of its proposal. There's no reason to wait to add these policies to the resolution. Amendment six, institute a minimum one-year trial period, oh, wait, Addie Ola already did that. Number three, uh, the, facilitate public access, access to staff and CRB work product. Amendment seven, ensure that the CRB annual report is a public document and include minimum requirements for must be included in the report. And the original CRB thing had a, had a list of it. Providing detailed direction regarding the CRB's annual report will ensure that the public is adequately informed of the CRB activities. Public knowledge of the CRB's efforts and activities will strengthen the community's trust in the CRB and ultimately improve community relations. I wanna take an aside here because this sounds awfully complicated. And I just want you to know that a number of people, thank you very much, wa, uh, wrote all the changes. So on memo enclosure number one, when you do the amendments, you can easily say amendment one, yes or no. And the changes in what you all had from two weeks ago, from Wednesday, are in here. So nobody has to do any individual work to make those changes. They've already been done for you. One more. Let's, where was I? I don't know where I was.
Tanisha Hudson?
Good evening, Tanisha Hudson.
Good evening.
I just wanna say, um, summer over, we need to get the heat on in here. It's cold in here. And I wanna see my time. It is cold in here, y'all.
I'm gonna continue also. Um, part four, transparent staffing and self-governance. Amendment nine, require the names and qualifications of all applicants and finalists for the executive director position be posted publicly. Rez, releasing the names of applicants to the public will allow the community to see that the strongest applicants were considered as finalists and the best candidates were hired. This will help the public develop and maintain faith in the CRB as the first board starts its work. Amendment ten, sever the, sever the proposed ordinance and bylaws. No duplicative provisions. The current proposal contains multiple instances where the ordinance and bylaws contain duplicative provisions. The effectu, the effectuate, the current language of two dash four six four, allowing the CRB to amend its bylaws without the constant need for city council action, provisions in its bylaws must be separate from those of the ordinance. Otherwise, any amendments to duplicative sections of the bylaws would be ineffective in light of the ordinances, control and authority. Conclusion, because the ordinance, bylaws, and resolutions are intersecting documents, some of those, some of these amendments necessitate changed language in multiple places. We are enclosing two documents that amount to a section-by-section breakdown of where changes would go, along with suggestive implementing language. We hope you find this helpful. Suggestive language to implement amendments to the ordinance, bylaws, and resolutions. Amendment one, allow CRB, is it the same thing? Allow CRB review all CB, this is already, yeah, this is already, all this is already been said. So, all right, so that's the end of, um, of the.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Um, Gloria Beard?
Hey, he's on it.
Hello, my name is Gloria Beard. And I was with the initiative of CRB. Uh, we did the bylaws together. And you heard what everybody had to say and all the changes we made. Because we still working behind the scenes trying to make this work. We need this board. And we need an auditor for real and an, and our executive, uh, director. It's got to work, you all. Don't throw this together real quick because the people that you hire has to do the work. We don't want people fussing and arguing and, we, we need this. Because back in the day when it was two thousand and seventeen, I kept seeing a hashtag that said, "A new Charlottesville." If we want a new Charlottesville and stop doing things as it was, we got to do some work. And we need this board to help the relationship with the community and pe, I mean, and the police force. If you have a police force that nobody trusts anybody on that force, what is it? If something happened to you, scared to call, then you put the law in your own hands, then what? You go to jail. So we got to get this, this town together. 'Cause look, they moving us out slowly but surely. We are being displaced. And it's awful. I see people laying down here, but I come down here in the evenings on the sidewalks, homeless people. That shouldn't be. California's bad enough. We can't do this in Charlottesville. We, we have to make an improvement. We got people in place to do these things. Step up and do the work. They got people in place of housing. They not doing anything to help these poor people. I'm one or two paychecks for being homeless for darn self. So where am I going if, if I can't live in my house? We got to do something. I don't know what in the world's going on and how we got in a place like this. You gotta think about all the people, not some of the people. And the people need to stand up and walk together. I see, I come to these meetings, not just here, but everywhere. I don't see people that should count. I don't know where these people are. I guess they hopefully at home watching this, but I don't know why. Some of these people don't stand out with us. Lord knows. But anyway, please take consideration what we have done and, and please make it work, you all. Don't just throw it under, under the bridge. We got to make this work. 'Cause look, this is my town, too. And I refuse to let somebody make me go away until I'm ready.
Um, Rosia Parker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
One, I wanna talk about, um, I didn't realize that, uh, West Haven, the West Haven area and, uh, Tenth and Page area have cameras now that we wasn't, um, aware of. We see them sitting up under the bridge. Is that an effect?
I'm not aware of any of them, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Do you know where? I ran there this morning. Where?
As, as you come up under the bridge on Eighth Street, it's sitting, it's like a little ball right there where they put the new sidewalks at. And then as you get ready to turn up into Hardy Drive at the end, right at stop sign.
Oh, one, go ahead. Are you gonna be home tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right. I'll stop through tomorrow and, uh, see if we can go look, okay?
Okay. And now.
Was that part of the discussion when you all had that meeting? Were, didn't you all have a meeting after, um, the incident last year about potential cameras going up?
From the Housing Authority, but that.
Did that come up then? No?
No, 'cause we chose not, I mean, you know, the neighborhood chose not to have that. So I kinda was wondering, 'cause I seen it as I was coming up under, well, I was made aware from residents, but then when I seen it for myself, I was like, hmm.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that either.
Yeah. Um, it's right there where the new park is, well, is the new park supposed to still be coming up on, in the Tenth and Page area? Yeah, so that's where that, the ball is, is sitting right there. Um, also, before I get back to the CRB, uh, what's gonna happen with housing now that Grant is resigning and, um, going somewhere else? And the people that are there are, are already taking care of the property and doing the necessary things that need to be done. And did you ever get the answers, Ms. Galvin, about the vacancies that was supposed to be, um, in housing? I didn't think so. Um, 'cause it's a lot of lives going on in housing. And, um, I still wanna say thank you. I ended up getting a lawyer, a letter, a letter from the lawyer where you can't help me. They didn't wanna give me a, a piece of paper to sign for you to help me. And now I have to deal with their lawyers in order for, uh, housing to help me with an issue that should've been done two years ago. Yeah, I hope so because this is tiring and it's drawn out for me. Um, and the CRB, the initial CRB put in a lot of work. And thank y'all so much, Addie Ola, Jeff, everybody, you know, Joshua, you know, everybody's put a hand and a leg and a foot and a mouth into this organization to push forward to make sure that this goes forth. Uh, we've done something that was, that took people years to do. And I think that, um, what we're asking for is really not a lot. It's just making people accountable for the actions. Uh, twenty seventeen, the same people that harmed us are still the ones who gotta make the vote for us. So make it count.
Wait a minute. Ms. Parker, wh, what do you need? The vacancy report? Or what, what are you looking for, for housing?
The public housing.
How many units there are offline?
Yeah.
And the, the number fluctuates a lot.
We have, we have that data. Um, and it was presented at the Housing Authority meeting last Monday, but just for information, informational purposes, the Housing Authority will be presenting at the very next council meeting on Monday, November eighteenth.
Okay.
So they'll be giving a comprehensive report in regards to the amount of vacancies, um, the units that are offline, and the reasons specifically as to why they're offline and so forth.
And may I ask, Mayor Walker, Mr. Bellamy, um, will we get any kind of update about the, the timeline for getting a new executive director?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there was a Housing Authority retreat last Saturday, um, in which there were a litany of different decisions made in regards to how the Housing Authority would be proceeding forth. Uh, it was also discussed at length at the Housing Authority meeting this past Monday, um, in a public setting. And again, they'll be providing that update to everyone at the next council meeting on Monday, November eighteenth.
Thank you.
In addition to the information about the Ting Internet Service. So it'll be a comprehensive report.
Okay. Um, Robin Hoffman?
Robin Hoffman. I live in the city. Um, I just wanna comment a little bit about being here today. And I always like to listen to what's going on in the city. I just feel like it's very important that the infrastructure is being worked on because I came from New York and they kinda neglected the infrastructure a lot, especially housing. And it's a mess, okay? And that's, it shouldn't happen. You know, we have to support people who are working here and we have to certainly honor, uh, you know, them and respect them, especially if the policing is not honorable or whatever. You know, we have to give trust to, to everybody and all that. But more importantly, not really more importantly, but I'm here because I wanna say that, uh, follow-up on the Charlottesville Community Media Center. Could, Katrina come up here for a minute? Katrina? Katrina and I and four other people had orientation. What'd you think?
It was fun. Yes, we had a ball. Yes.
Did you learn a lot?
Yes, but I need to learn a little more.
And also, did you have a really good time with your new show that you're possibly gonna have?
Yes, I did, Ms. Robin.
We interviewed each other. And when we interviewed each other, we kinda, you know, saw how we were gonna be. We were in front of the camera. We also did audio. And what else? Audio, the visual, the CG, which is computer graphics, right? We did that. And anyway, so it's gonna be followed up with editing and fielding next. So there were six producers and Cal Tate, who ran it, it was great, um, said that it was like the most exciting group. You guys were, you got it right away. I felt like that, too. Um, so what happens is we all exchange, do each other's programs. And we're live, so to speak, on TV. And it was really fabulous. And also, I just wanted to say, if you could honestly say, like, were you nervous? And also, I just wanted to say, if you could honestly say, like, were you nervous? Like, did you...
Not really.
No, I know. You were like, you were great. She was like so professional, like instinctively just went right into it. And I was like, you know, being interviewed and I was like very, you know, it was very professional. So, yeah, so that was great. And I'm really happy that we're sort of going to be doing producing. But I want to say real quick, because the time's running out, nine to five, if you have lunch, you can go there and do a show, okay? So don't feel like you can't do a show, right?
Right.
It was easy.
It was easy.
It was great. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Hall.
I'm John Edward Hall of the Friespring neighborhood. To the members of our City Council, the members of the excellent outgoing faculty of UVA who have elected not to run for council again, our fine city manager, Dr. Taren Richardson, and members of our audience, I will be our Director of the CRB. We are very interested in our civilian review board. And police body cameras are the key to success here. Body cameras worn around the necks of police officers are automatic smartphones. They have automatic smartphone capability with chat box capability and texting. These technologies brought to us by Steve Jobs of Apple and his pioneering work throughout his lifetime can be directed toward reform of the justice system for the better. And this can be done by automatically performing the tasks that need to be done for the appropriate legal people as well as victims of injustice. Before, you know, just by using the technology we now have at hand, we can speed justice reform, direct the context. Body cam information that police collect at crime scenes passed on to newly hired paralegal psychologists at Region 10 for mental health evaluation of persons suspected of mental illness. Collect at crime scenes passed on to newly hired the perpetrators being accused of crime and persons bringing charges after a 48-hour delay so that everyone can kind of collect their thoughts and really accurately record exactly what happened. Perceptions are clear and texting of occupants, accounts can be emailed, attached to appropriate lawyers and civilians for civilian review. I believe this will speed accurate verdicts and justice reform. We can expand all services in a large City Hall complex large enough to encompass City Hall, the transit station, the General District Court, the police station with room for OAR and the new paralegals and Region 10 personnel from Water Street to Market Street, housing the parking garage and the CB Transit, Charlottesville Transit, that is, with several change machines added to boot. We can extend our CAT services all the way to Airport Road along Burke Mar Drive and Route 29 with liberal inclusion of solarized, sheltered stops equipped with electric storage batteries for...
Thank you. I'm Quentin Harrell.
Just one thing as Mr. Harrell is walking up. I think it's important for us to note that everyone has shortcomings. And in certain situations, it's important for us to show grace and a level of just grace to different people. Regardless of what we may think and regardless of what's going on, there's a level of respect and grace I think that needs to be shown to everyone, regardless of when they're speaking. And as we talk about different issues and showing support to different people, specifically revolving around mental health and so forth, it is important for us, again, to show a level of maturity and the same grace that we will want others to show to potentially our parents or those who are going through different situations. So I hope that we can keep that in mind in the future when individuals are speaking.
I want to give a couple of minutes for that can soak in.
Well, I don't want you to...
But then, my time start already?
It's starting.
But then afterwards, I want to make sure Mr. City Councilor Bellamy doesn't call people like me, old man, anymore to show some grace as well.
Sit down.
I read that.
So, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Richardson, staff, how y'all doing this evening?
Good evening.
My name is Quentin Harrell. I live up 29 North. And I'm a local businessman and a volunteer in this community. I've been a businessman for more years than I was a volunteer. And that's what most people know me as. But my volunteer work in the last five to 10 years has been, I would say 90% directed towards the upliftment of the African-American community. I'm all about black folks, lifting up black folks. And I'm very intentional about it because I truly believe that the upliftment of the African-American community feeds into the greater prosperity of the entire community. We are at a point in history right now in our city where we have an opportunity to right a lot of historical wrongs. There are inklings and there are signs of things improving. Things are changing. As I look up at the diocese, I can see that change from where I am. But I think there's much, much work to do. That's why there's still rage, frustration and angst in the community. But I think that we're on the way. So first, I would like to say thank you. Thank you all. I'm here in support of New Hill Development Corporation. Thank you all for your vote of confidence and partnering with New Hill. Bless you. New Hill Development Corporation. And I think what you all will see tonight, as you all entrusted them to create a small area plan, I think you all will be quite pleased in the work that was done. The work is serious. I think it addresses racism. We all need, you all need the different lanes of people holding you all accountable. We have passionate people in our community that come in here and hold you guys accountable on a regular basis. But you also need partners. And both of them are important. And we look to partner with you all to create a new economic landscape in this community. We think a new economic engine in this community will create black wealth in this community. And that's what I'm all about. And that's why I'm passionate about New Hill Development Corporation. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Shamora Cooper. I saw her, did she leave? All right. All right, so we have two spots. If there's anyone else who would like to speak.
Take one of the slides, Mr. Ford.
Shamora.
Oh, Shamora's here. Shamora? Yeah, you can come next.
So I, I'm not going to keep drilling down about the CRB. Y'all got what's in front of you. Before I start, those folks who support the CRB, please stand. People believe in what we just did. And the blood and sweat that the initial CRB did was tremendous. But what the People's Coalition did was tried to do something within two weeks to have this on the plate. We hope y'all taking consideration and do the right thing. Thank you so much.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
All right.
No? All right.
Can I make one more announcement? I know I've talked a lot, but I haven't told my wife happy birthday. Her birthday is Thursday. And I want to make sure her and my lovely daughter back there know how much we appreciate mommy and her sacrifice. So happy early birthday to you, honey. Y'all give it up for my wife. Thank you.
Happy early birthday.
Now I don't got to sleep on the couch.
All right, so, yeah, we all, we have the, you know, CRB discussion coming up just after the city charter amendment. So it's the second item after we come back for break. And we have the New Hill Report on here at closer to the end of the evening tonight. So we'll be discussing both of those items that were the primary topics on the, during the comments. All right?
Ms. Walker, I have a question for Dr. Richardson. Dr. Richardson, I, could you please explain or find out about the Christmas tree location?
Yeah, that is correct. We are moving it. We're having the big celebration in the pavilion this year. What we want to do is move more people into those areas where it gives more space and more people can enjoy that festive activity and then be able to see it later on as they come up and down the mall walking. So that's what we were worried about, just being able to have more people enjoy it rather than a select group of few people where it's so jam-packed, where it gives more space and more opportunity. So we're going to start with the tree down in the pavilion. Then we're going to move it up.
So you're moving it to Central Place?
Yes.
No?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no. No, we're moving it right up where the gentleman mentioned.
Right, right, it's going to be starting in the pavilion for the actual ceremony.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so if we could be back at 8:05? All right, break.